This is the February 10th meeting of the Revere City Council. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would everybody please either shut off their cell phones or put them on silent at this time? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Row call.
Okay.
All right. Row call. Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Councilor Janino.
Here.
Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Councilor Haas.
Here.
Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Councilor Novosolsky.
Here.
Councilor Patch.
Here.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers.
Here.
Councilor Riad.
Here.
And the President Zambudo.
Here.
Mr. President, if I could have a point of information, please?
Okay. Councilor Patch, I know you have something you want to get out there. Point of information, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry to take up the time of the council, but I think it's a very important issue for my ward. I have been getting several phone calls from various people in my ward. It went out in the senses that they changed the voting place for 6-1 and 6-2 from the Whalen School to St. Mary's, the lower part of St. Mary's Church. I just want to make the people watching tonight that live in my ward in 6-1 and 6-2 that they no longer vote at the Whalen School, and hopefully the two newspapers will put this in there for the election for February 25th, a very important election for the city. Ward 3 will still vote at the fire station in North Revere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Point of information, you said Ward 3. It's precinct 3.
Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
Approval of the journals.
Any corrections to the journals?
Suspend the rules.
All in favor, all opposed. Motion to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed. So voted. We'll take up the communications from the mayor. Where are we supposed to? I, forgive me, we're going to take up the subcommittee reports first. Councilor, Mr. Chairman Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the Ways and Means Committee met, and we had two items on the agenda, and I am finding them as we speak because you have taken me out of order. Communication, the first was a communication from the mayor relative to the contract between the City of Revere and the Revere Firefighters Union. That was voted out unanimously, and I ask that this council do the same. Motion on the floor to approve.
Okay. The motion is, shall the City Council approve the union contracts by and between the City of Revere and the Revere Firefighters Union covering the periods from July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2013, and July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2015? Row call. Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
It's approved.
The next, Mr. President. Mr. Financial Director.
Yes, this time I also ask for the, um, can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to ask that the council also take up the transfer from stabilization fund of the $2,006,000 in order to, excuse me, $2,500 in order to, so the city can pay the retroactive raises and the raise amount for this year.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, want to call the roll? Councilor Morabito?
Last week, I wrote down 2.4 million would be retro. I was just curious, was there any?
No, the, if you look at the letter from the mayor, the communication from the mayor is on June 30th, 2014, you may have, it said 2,500. The 2,400 was the total amount of the cost of the raises inclusive of next year. So that's where you may have written down 2.4 million.
Mr. Director, so we're talking 1.6 million at this time, is that correct?
No, we're talking 2,500.
Okay, that's not what the clerk just showed me. Okay. So we're transferring 2,500?
Right.
Okay. That's what we want to transfer and call the roll.
Mr. President, go ahead.
Councilor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the last communication we had said 1.6 and that, right? So the last communication we had said there would be 1.6 drawn from rainy day fund, and now is there an additional 400,000 that's going to be taken out?
No, that was my error. I was looking at this. It was 1,650,000 is the amount. That's the correct amount that was using. Right. Two annual, right. Sorry.
So now it is the 1, 1.650 that we are transferring from the rainy day fund to the state?
The reserve for, uh?
To the reserve for the, okay. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Okay. Shall the City Council hereby approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $1,650,000 from the stabilization fund to the reserve contract negotiations account? Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Mr. President. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, we also met in the Ways and Means Subcommittee in reference to the communication from the mayor relative to the contract salary renegotiations for the position of superintendent of public works. And at that particular time, we voted out favorably unanimously by the subcommittee and members of the council who were in attendance. I ask that this be voted out favorably this evening. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
On the motion, shall the City Council approve the renegotiated union contract by and between the City of Revere and Unit A of the laborers' union, Local Number 22, as it pertains to the base salary for the superintendent of public works? Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
It's approved.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Council, Council. Council. Vice President Guanasso. Okay. And Chairman of the Appointment Subcommittee.
I had, I wore two hats this afternoon, and early this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met also. And before, we had four items on the agenda, the first being the residency waiver for Larmen Schuska, part-time public library, 26 Saratoga Street, East Boston, Mass. That was voted out unanimously by the Subcommittee. Reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Joseph A. LaValle, 41 Bickford Ave., Revere, for a three-year term. That was also voted out favorably. Reappointment to the Health Board, Dr. John L. Bennecke, 140 School Street, Revere, for a three-year term. That was also voted out favorably. And finally, the reappointment to the Disability Commission, Lucy Cavelo. She now resides in Jack Satterhouse, Revere, for a three-year term, and that also was voted out favorably. I ask the City Council vote us out favorably, as we have in the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will vote for the residency waiver separately, and then we'll approve the other three together.
Fine. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Okay. Motion to grant Larmen Schuska part-time public library employee a residency waiver in accordance with Title II, Chapter 2-06, Section 2-06060B. Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
It's approved. And on the others, we can combine. Yes, on all of it.
We're going to, we're going to take up all the other three.
On the appointments, to the Conservation Commission, the Health Board, and the Disability Commission, Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
It's approved. And on the others, we can combine. Yes, on all of it.
We're going to, we're going to take up all the other three.
On the appointments, to the Conservation Commission, the Health Board, and the Disability Commission, Councilor Rigo?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Penter is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Councilor Riad?
Yes.
Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
It's approved.
Okay, we're referring back to regular business. Before I, before I start the first public hearing, I just want to give a brief history lesson on how our public hearings work up here and why. Several years ago, we used to have public hearings here. Some of them would go on two hours, two and a half hours, and we were able to vote on special permits the same night. And there would be a lot of input from a lot of different people. What we found was, in a lot of instances, if there were eight votes here, a proposal went through with a special permit. And sometimes, there were unintended consequences. There were little hidden gems that we might not have seen. So the council, in its wisdom, and I believe it was a motion of mine, decided to change the ordinance and not allow special permits to be voted on the same night as a public hearing. What this does is allows the sunlight of a proposal to be scrutinized over a minimum of a week, but at least all the details would come out in Subcommittee meeting. And the point of all of this is that we have shortened the public hearings, not that we don't allow people to speak up here, but we have a brief presentation by the proponents and a brief response by the opponents, and the real work is done in Subcommittee. Now, there were some other statements that have been around, and frankly, there's just, there's been a lot of misinformation and some ignorance about what goes on here, and that's the reason for this little diatribe of mine here, to explain what goes on. So the length of discussion is when we meet in Subcommittee. And those meetings are almost never, never held before 5:00 p.m. unless there's some sort of emergency. So that's to clear up some of the misinformation that's out there and how we do conduct public hearings now. Special permits are never able to be voted on the same night as the public hearing, and for that, I think the process is much more transparent, and it works a lot better for the city. And so that's where we're at with, that's my little history lesson on where we've come from and how we avoid making mistakes that are very hard to correct, especially on special permits.
Mr. President.
Council Powers, you want to speak before the public hearing?
I agree with you. I agree with you that public hearings are very important. I also feel, and maybe that's something that we should address here as City Councils, that the public hearings be held at a time, whether it be on a Saturday afternoon, a Saturday morning, or, you know, maybe at 7:00 in the evening when it's easier for people that work all day, that have a vested interest, that live in the neighborhoods, that want to attend these public hearings and let their voices be heard. And I think, you know, when we refer things to a public hearing, that's a great thing, but I think for some reason, it's very difficult, for obvious reasons, when people work all day. Some people don't get out of work till 5:00. They want to come up and speak on an issue. So I have no problem with coming here at 7:00 in the evening or on a Saturday, and I think that that should be something that, you know, we should be looking at, at least make it a little easier for the general public to get up and voice their concerns. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. I think we've had enough information on how the process works here, and now we'll go ahead with the first public hearing.
This is C-14Z-03, hearing called as ordered on the special permit application of the Department of Planning and Community Development for the reconstruction of Harry Delarussue Stadium. Proponents?
Mr. President.
Proponents.
Mr. President.
Council Riad.
While we're under suspension, may I suggest we take up the late communications? We are.
Well, we did refer back to the special, regular business. If you would like to.
I would move to suspend the rules in order to take up the.
All in favor, all opposed. Suspension of the rules? So voted.
And I'd move to take up the two late communications regarding this issue.
Can we just include that in the public hearing, or?
Okay.
Okay, fine. All right. We didn't need suspension. I don't think we needed suspension of the rules.
Well, you had to take the late.
Mr. City Planner.
Frank Strinji, Director of Planning and Community Development. I'm up here tonight representing the city, basically applying for a special permit because the reconstruction of Harry Delarussue Stadium will involve demolition of all structural features and buildings on the site. And presently, there are two non-conforming structures there, the Concession Field House. Both those facilities will be totally replaced with brand-new facilities. Along with those facilities, let me just give you a brief summary of what the total renovations will include for the general public. The, there'll be a multipurpose artificial turf field to accommodate football, soccer, field hockey, and lacrosse. There'll be a 400-meter track with field events for short foot, javelin, discus, long jump, and high jump. There'll be 2,000-seat bleacher system with handicap accessibility, and new heated press box, and built-in storage below the bleacher system. Two basketball courts and two tennis courts will be relocated at the stadium. Full lighting for all field events, as well as basketball and tennis court facilities. There'll be two separate buildings, which we are here for the special permit for, at the west and east end of the stadium. Those buildings will have exterior finishes that'll match the new Hill School and complement the new Hill School. And they'll house offices, storage bays, concession stands, ticket booths, bathroom facilities, and field houses for home and visiting teams and referees. And there'll be ornamental fencing and brick pillars along Park Avenue frontage with new main entrance concourse at the center of the bleachers on Park Ave. And there'll be a new east entrance concourse in Plaza adjacent to the new school. There'll be new fencing along Alston Street, Fernwood Ave. And there'll be frontage, the frontage with new concrete sidewalks and street trees along those streets. New landscape memorial with pavers and flagpole in northeast corner of the stadium. Be a new state-of-the-art scoreboard. The stadium will also have the benefit of using 100 parking spaces that'll be provided by the new Hill School. New upgraded drainage, including a new 24-inch drain line that'll help service the Park Ave area. And there'll be new infrastructure for internet, wireless internet, security cameras, and sound system. But the, the main reason I'm here is for the construction of the new field house and concession stand. There'll be bathroom, there'll be approximately 17 bathroom facilities for female and 12 bathroom facilities for, for men. And that basically sums it up. It'll be a state-of-the-art facility, the whole entire city will be proud of, and it'll be, it'll benefit people of all age groups in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Planner. Any other proponents? Proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed to this new stadium? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councilors. Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, I rise for the occasion to offer to my dear brother Frank Strinji the comments that I've made several, several times upon many, my many visits to Harry Delarussue Stadium. It didn't take very long to figure out what side of the field, the home field should be, where the sun is always beautiful on the right side. But as I see this diagram here, nobody listened. And going to these many events, I always look over and I say, wow, isn't that nice? They have all the sun over there, and we're freezing on this side. And I don't understand, we had the perfect opportunity to do this, just flip this around, put everything on the top, put it on the bottom, and put the stands in a nice warm spot so all the local residents can bask in the sun while our visitors are freezing. But no, we didn't do that. We kept it this way because it might be easier, or whatever the case may be. While we have it in its state that it's in, we'll never be able to get in this position again. I beg that it go on the other side. It's so much more enjoy, isn't it for the enjoyment of people coming to that facility? The sun is part of the enjoyment, and it's absolutely freezing. It seems like, I don't know what it is, Frank. Now offer your words of wisdom that will con. Money.
The simple answer to that, the bleachers are along the frontage, and they always were along the frontage of Park Avenue. That's where the main entrance to the bleachers are going to be, off of Park Avenue. There is no way to facilitate those bleachers, to position those bleachers on the other side of the field, and at the same time, get two basketball courts, two tennis courts. And again, the buildings that are associated with the bleachers have to have frontage along Park Avenue as well. That's where the main concourse is coming in. So we'll have two concourses, an east plaza and a central concourse off of Park Avenue. I understand your concern. It's, the committee understood your concern, but there was no way to.
The traffic commissioner.
No, Traffic Commission did not vote in this. But anyway, your concern was seriously considered by the committee, and there was no way to position the fields to accommodate that relocation of the bleacher system. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Council Janino?
Thank you. I think this is a great plan, and it's long overdue. It's really not fair to our track team at the high school to not have a regulation track in our city, and that's one of our sports that we excel at most. We have so many stars from so many years past that are from the Revere High Track Team. So that's so important into our football team. So I really look forward to this. I think it's going to bring a lot of pride back to the city and a lot of excitement for our high school students, so I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janino. Council Haas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, I think this is a great opportunity, especially for the youth of our community. Excuse me. What I'd like to know is, what is the total cost of this project? Doesn't work. To ask a question again, Frank, what is the estimated cost of this project?
Well, the final construction cost estimate is around $7 million.
$7 million? And how is that composed of? We've got a grant, Mahagan Sun, that's a.
We have a $2.7 million grant from the state, and the City Council bonded $5.5 million for the project.
Right.
And we have another $2 million if Mahagan Sun is successful in getting their license.
Very good. You know, it's a, it's going to be an elaborate facility, without question. I'm just hoping the traffic in the area could stand it, you know? But that's something with the Hill School and everything else we're going to have to work with. All right, thank you.
Well, we are fortunate that there are 100 and so odd parking spaces going along with the Hill School that will provide parking that was never there for the stadium, and is a direct pedestrian access from the parking lot right into the east concourse of the stadium, so that would work out nice.
And the, and the basketball courts will be in the confines of the stadium.
They will be in the northwest corner of the stadium.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Haas. Council Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, due respect to Council Riad, and just to make it official, that we take the late communication and tie it in with the public hearing for the site plan review report. Yeah, well, just to make it official.
I think we already did that. It's part of the record, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, myself and Council Riad have been on this committee almost from inception of the design of the stadium, and we're all excited about this. With respect to Council Guanasso's comments, realize that both the visitors and the home team are on the same side now, whereas they have been for many years. We haven't had stands on the north side of the stadium for, you know, decades, if I may say. But realize that when we took the property for the Hill School, we had to find a place for the basketball courts and the tennis courts that are there now, and this was the most obvious place to put it in with this facility, knowing that the Ward 4 people and were still, were using it before, and will still have a local access to use it. But we're getting a beautiful field, beautiful stadium, beautiful track, official track, as was stated by Council Janino. But I think, believe it or not, the most important thing for people to go there is they'll be able to use the bathrooms, you know, and have decent bathrooms to go into and to utilize at any time that they're going to be there. The track is going to be, I'm not going to say 24 hours, are the fielders, but they'll, people will be able to go in there and do their walking, their running, and playing around, and doing things with their families in this fine facility. And just to confirm, I don't believe we talked about changing the name of this stadium at all to keep it Harry Delarussue. So, you know, it's going to be a beautiful facility, and I think everybody's going to be proud of it when we're through. So for now, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Novosolsky. Council Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I know years, a few years back, the McCaffrey Toffoni Foundation Committee put in the lighting system, is, and they're pretty. they're pretty, uh, uh, they were put on big stand metal. Are they, are they gonna be moved, or are we gonna, are they gonna be removed, or?
Counsel, we have to relocate Memorial. If Memorial is relocated as an office in honor of the stadium, the flagpole, uh, will be their favorite, and Memorial will be there with landscape and ground.
Will still have lighting?
Yeah.
And then that one, the Memorial will stay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. Counsel Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to briefly somewhat reiterate Counsel Novoselfsky's comment, uh, this was, uh, this project was the result of many, many longstanding meetings. One must understand that given the, uh, challenges to the site, it was extremely difficult to get everything that we needed to get on this site, uh, in this site, and it required several meetings, reworkings, et cetera, et cetera. But I think the plan that we came up with is the best possible one under the circumstances. Uh, to address Counsel Guanasso's issues, um, uh, the consideration, of course, is, was mainly for, for football as far as the spectators are concerned. The football, uh, games are, uh, the one thing that, that you could expect most people to attend. And, uh, given the fact that, uh, that the football games are played in the evening, uh, we did not, uh, consider, uh, the possibility that we could have suspended the laws perhaps of, uh, physical science and gotten the sun to come out. It is eight o'clock at night. Uh, that unfortunately, we, and I apologize, we did not consider that. However, uh, that was about the only oversight I can think of, uh, in the-
Thanks for your input, Counsel. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. I needed that. Counsel Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do wanna take a minute to just commend Frank on these plans. They are, um, they are very exciting, and it's, it's, as everyone has said, long overdue to see this kind of, um, action happen down, down at the stadium. We're, we desperately need a new stadium, and, and this is something that is very exciting. Um, I do have a couple of questions. One, were any of the properties that were taken as part of Hill School and, and, um, like, as a whole project, were, were any of those properties taken for this, um, project, for the, for the stadium?
No, we don't take them.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then my own, my other question, uh, as far as, uh, the old materials that are at the stadium, are, is there any plan to maybe resalvage or, or keep some of the, some of the, um, infrastructure that we are gonna take down? Is there anything that we could do? Do we plan that any of that, anything that's there is salvageable or could be used, uh, somewhere else in the city?
No, we looked at that, Counsel. It's basically junk. Everything's, it's coming out.
Yeah.
We're gonna start brand new. Everything is gonna be removed from the site.
Is that for, now, for the stadium, but is that also true for the Hill School and, and some of the, the fencing and lighting at, uh, at Hill Park, the current Hill Park site? Is, is any of that salvageable, or?
Uh, the bleachers at the, at the Hill Park, uh, they're, uh, they're proposed to be relocated down at the high school fields. Uh, we looked at salvaging the, uh, the light poles at Hill Park to use those at the high school baseball field. Uh, but, uh, it, it wasn't worth it.
Yeah.
The poles are made out of concrete, and there's no way to take those down and, and maintain them in one piece. They would just crumble. And, uh, the lighting right now is, is obsolete.
Yeah.
So-
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Powers.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Frank, I have, uh, first of all, I wanna comment everyone involved, uh, in, Mayor and yourself, and, uh, my colleagues that are involved in, uh, planning and, uh, bringing, uh, this stadium, uh, to fruition. Uh, I, I think it's long overdue, particularly the toilets down there. I can remember, uh, probably a dozen years, well, longer than that, maybe twenty years ago, a former who was deceased, now U.S. Senator Paul Sankus, uh, had a bad experience down there, and, uh, and, uh, consequently, uh, reported it to Mayor Colola at the time, and I had a bad experience. But, uh, and it, in any ca, in any case, uh, in, in any case, uh, I'm beginning to feel like, uh, Jay Letterman now, you know? In any case, the question I have relates not so much to the stadium. You mentioned there's gonna be a two-foot, uh, new sewer line going in down there. My correction?
A, a new drain line, 24-inch drain line.
Yeah. That's the drain line that runs down, uh, Broadway, uh, that's the, to the, uh, the Rumney Marsh Academy, that area down in there, central county ditch?
That drain line runs into the central county.
That takes everything off of the alphabet streets on Park Ave, correct?
They, we actually have two drain lines. We have one within Park Avenue.
Yep.
And we have one that cuts across the field.
Okay. Now, I guess my next question is, years ago, uh, when, uh, we did the, uh, Rumney Marsh Academy, uh, we talked about putting some type of a, a pump down at, uh, Martin Street, uh, to, uh, help, uh, mitigate some of the, uh, sewage and, uh, heavy water that was coming, uh, down that way, uh, from the Atwood Street area and down onto the Martin Street tide gate. Has anything been, have we talked about that recently, about, uh, correcting that?
Well, that's way out of the scope of this project.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I guess my question is, that new line, is that gonna add, uh, to more water going into that area down there?
No, it's, it's, it's the same watershed that'll be going down there. We're not adding any more.
Okay. That's, that's my question, because the people who live down there have had a problem for many years with, uh, flooding down there, and I just wanna make sure we're not adding something that's gonna be intrusive to the neighborhood with regard to flooding.
No, there's also an extensive underdrain system under the field here.
Yep.
Which will, which will take water and, and leach it into the ground.
Yep.
So there actually would be less runoff coming from that field than there, there is now.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Morbeto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a, uh, great development project. Um, I think not only will it improve our community, it's gonna improve our city athletics. One small question, um, is there security cameras within this plan?
Uh, there will be, there will be security cameras. There will also be security cameras attached to the Hill School, which will, which will pick up the eastern part of the, uh, the, uh, stadium. But we're gonna add additional security cameras in the northwest corner and, and southwest corner of the stadium. So the entire facility will be, will be secured on, uh, a camera.
Is that included in the figures you gave Counsel Arigo?
No, those, those cameras will come in, we can't put those in, in this bid. We're gonna include those separately, uh, with the school system's security cameras.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Morbeto. Uh, Frank, uh, we're all obviously excited about, uh, this new stadium. We're excited to have a regulation track. One of the few sports I was any good at in high school was, I was a cross-country runner. Uh, I wasn't much, wasn't much of an athlete other than that. However, uh, we're certainly excited about this, and I, I know most of us will be a lot more excited when Mohegan Sun gets the license and is able to give us $2 million towards the payment of this stadium. So, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's when I'll be really excited, when that, when that day comes. But, uh, thank you, uh, all for, uh, I know how hard everybody's worked on this, especially you, especially your department, and my colleagues on the council who have been involved, and, uh, and, and my colleague from W3 for his input. And, uh, again, thank you so much for your, uh, your efforts.
I have to give kudos to the rest of the, uh, stadium design committee, along with Counsel Novoselfsky and Counsel Riordan, Nick Reistrom, uh, the city engineer, Paul Agenjo from DPW, Sean Hart, the athletic director, Mike Inahosa, the, uh, Parks and Recreation Director. We're all part of the committee.
It's a great team, and you've done, you have done a great job, and it's a great service to the youth of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning Subcommittee.
This is a hearing called as ordered on an amendment to the senior citizen property tax work off abatement ordinance.
Proponents, people in favor, please come to the podium. Lois, that'll be you.
Well, I guess I'm speaking for all of them.
Name, name and address for the record, please.
Lois Nielsen, Eustace Street, Revere. In the enactment of the, of 2002 on Chapter 184 and, uh, Section 52 about the work abatement program, it was allotted that $500 to $1,000 could be given to seniors on that program. I'm ashamed to say that Revere should have thought of this a long time ago, of raising it to at least $750. Shame on you all for not having done it. We shouldn't have to grovel for what's obviously, uh, something that would be nice to do for the seniors. Uh, I know Belmont has gone to $1,000, but that's a town. And, um, I haven't taken account of the cities and towns that went to $750, but if you'd want me to, I will be glad to. But that will also change the number of hours as well to meet the, the requirement of the, uh, hourly wage. So I hope you all at least, uh, give it some serious thought tonight. And if you don't, I'll be back.
Well, we thank you for your, for your efforts on this and, uh, for your input, and I know you've been an advocate for this for a long time. We've discussed this for, for a long time, and I'm glad that it's finally before this body as a public hearing and soon to get some action on it. So, uh, thank, thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor of this, uh, change? Hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people that wanna risk their life? I mean, people that, people, people that, uh, might be opposed to this proposal. Hearing and seeing none, who close that side of the hearing. Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as we all know, uh, seniors are an integral part of the city's operation. They save the city great amounts of money, you know? What we're looking here to do is to basically increase their salary. It's currently $8 per hour. Uh, it's a tremendous program, uh, and I honestly believe it's going to, you're gonna submit this through a committee, right? Ways and Means? Okay, and I'll save my comments for that point in time. Thank you.
Well, uh, I wanna thank you for putting this motion in, because, uh, I was supposed to put this motion in, and I'm happy that you did it for all of us. Uh, but I, I doubt that we see anybody that's gonna be opposed to this, uh, uh, motion, like I said, unless they wanna take their life in their hands. Uh, any other counselors? Ways and Means?
This is a communication from the Diane Colola, the election commissioner. In January 2013, members of the Revere On the Move Task Force established two initiatives to work with the residents of the city of Revere in hopes that they could lead a healthier lifestyle by making food better choices and living in a more active lifestyle. The Healthy Corner Store Initiative focused on working with store owners to provide residents with healthy food options in areas most in need, while the Healthy Dining Initiative worked with restaurant owners to provide healthier options to residents when dining out. As such, the committee has proclaimed the week of February 16th to the 22nd as Healthy Eating Week with the enclosed proclamation to mark the celebration. A community gathering will take place on Tuesday, February 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the American Legion Building. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Would you like to, uh, name an address for the record, please?
Hello, Counsel. My name is Dimple Rana. I am the neighborhood organizer for Revere On the Move and also resident of Revere, South Ave. I would like to, um, ask for your support for proclaiming the week of February 16th through the 22nd as Healthy Eating Week, and also in honor of the fourth anniversary of First Lady Michelle Obama's Let's Move Initiative, where Revere has, um, four medals in that honor.
I thank you very much. So, uh, we're gonna vote on whether to, uh, Counsel Haas, you have?
I think she's asking that we support the resolution.
Yes, that, that, we're gonna vote on the resolution right now. That's, uh, what I was getting to. On the resolution?
Counsel Arigo?
Yes.
Counsel Janino?
Yes.
Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Morbeto?
Yes.
Counsel Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Counsel Penter is absent. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Riordan?
Yes.
And Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Mr. President, just a point of information. Um, I'd like to remind everybody that on this, uh, issue on Tuesday, February 18th, there'll be a gathering, uh, to supporting this, so, I hope everybody will go.
And I, and I wanna thank the young lady for her hard work, uh, as the organizer of this, and, uh, we will see you on the 18th.
Yes, thank you. Late communications. Any motion? No? No? Just, uh, a late communication from Frank Stringi on the PUD, uh, special permit. And that's made part of the zoning. And, and then we have a communication from the mayor regarding the appearance before the City Council on Monday, February 24th. Dear Counsel, I along with Nick Catnazzo, Director of Municipal Inspections, would like to appear before the Council on Monday, February 24th at 6:00 p.m. to ask the Council approve the establishment of an elderly flu revolving account in order that the receipts received from seasonal influenza vaccines can be deposited into that fund. The projected annual revenues are anticipated to be $12,000 to $15,000. The intention is to make this a self-supporting program and have funds available in the event of a pandemic or other disaster. In addition, funds will cover costs of running the program, such as vaccine clinic supplies, office expenses, and other related costs. Originally, these expenses were funded as an appropriation line item. Funding was cut in 2006 due to insurance reimbursements. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Dan Rizzo, Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing and knowing of all the business I'll entertain in a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I have a late motion in there. I have a late motion.
Oh. Timeout. I, I, we must have missed a late motion. You have a late motion in?
I gave it to Ashley, uh, yeah, Friday.
Can it wait, or is it important?
Well, it's, it's, it is important, yes.
Do you know it off the top of your head, sir?
Oh, yes, I do.
Well, why don't you introduce it as a verbal motion?
Uh, the, uh, there's been a problem, uh, with regard to, uh, some of the, uh, signalization on the state highways, and I'm gonna cite two examples, and I would hope that, uh, the mayor's office would, uh, get a communication into Mass Highway as quickly as possible. Uh, when we have these large snowstorms, as we've had recently, in fact, I was down there today, uh, down on Sharmut Street. Wonderland has plowed all the sidewalk from Wonderland Marble, the old Wonderland Marble, all the way down to the T. And, uh, 'cause that's where people in that neighborhood that go to work every morning have to walk, or should be walking. But the area around Wonderland Marble has not been plowed, shoveled, or anything else. And even more importantly, there's a pedestrian signal, a, a new pedestrian signal that's been installed down there, uh, in the past year or two. Snow around it is three, four feet high, which prohibits anyone from getting to that pedestrian signal to push it so they can safely cross North Shore Road. So, and, and there's a similar situation down in the Oak Island area. People that use the convenience store that come over from, uh, Arcadia Street, Ellerton Street, Oak Island Street, that area there, that, uh, go over there to, you know, purchase some necessities when they need them, bread, milk, et cetera. I, I think that those particular areas, in any other similar areas in the city, I think it's incumbent upon Mass Highway to get a crew down there with a bobcat and clean out the area so people have access to those pedestrian signals. I know that the DCR down on the Boulevard, they do a tremendous job down there with the sidewalks. They, they do both sides of- They do both sides, as a matter of fact. So I think that a communication should go to Mass Highway and stipulate that those areas be cleaned out, particularly the ones around crosswalks and pedestrian signals. That's a busy, busy area down there and I wouldn't want to see anybody get injured or even worse. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. It's Mass DOT nowadays, but on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Motion to adjourn? This council will be adjourned until February 24th at 6:00 p.m.